Welcome, everyone, to the April 4th, 2024 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting in the town of Chatham. It's 3:00 PM. And pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31st, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for on the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 985-581-638-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. First, we're going to have a quorum and approve this portion of this type of meeting. So Jenny?
Virginia Fenwick approves.
Paul C. Simple, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Ed Acton approves.
And David H. Veitch, I approve.
And as do I. So the procedural steps of our meetings are as follows. We have a roll call of all board members. We ask if any citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone only ask them to give their name and the last four digits of the phone number for identification purposes. The hearing notice is read by staff. Sarah Clock, and you, are you representative, presents the appeal or application. Anyone in favor of the appeal or application may speak for five minutes. I will summarize all letters received by the board. Anyone against the application or has a question can also speak for five minutes. The applicant can then rebut testimony. Board members may direct questions to anyone present. If the board hears any further information, we close the public hearing, and then deliberations take place. We vote on the appeal or application, and in the Commonwealth of Mass, it's required that you get four out of five votes in the affirmative, which is a supermajority. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close the meeting via verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. I would ask that you shut off all cell phones, all the way off, because I can hear the vibration from up here, and it can become distracting. And before you speak, once you're recognized by the chair, please approach the microphone, and then you can talk. So, that being said, we have no minutes today to approve, so we'll have the first application.
Application number 24-024, Mark Smiley and Beth Smiley, Carib William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 111 Addicks Trail, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessors Map, 14A3, Block 17, Lot N66. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming accessory structure garage on a conforming lot via the demolition of the existing garage and the construction of a new accessory structure garage with habitable space above. The existing garage is non-conforming in that it is located 30.6 feet from the Westerly Abutter. The proposed accessory structure will be non-conforming in that it will be located 28 feet from the Westerly Abutter where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,225 square feet, 4.8%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,253 square feet, 4.8%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 46,637 square feet in the R40A zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the Protective Bylaw.
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Mark and Elizabeth Smiley. I am pinch-hitting for Bill Riley, who's on vacation this week, lucky him, somewhere warmer than here, as also I might add, but...
We're all the better off.
So the Smilys, as you heard, own the property at 111 Addicks Trail, which is out on Morris Island. And the application before you is the partial demolition of the existing garage structure and addition of a new garage with living space above. The Smilys purchased this property back in 2017. They have a large family. They have four children in their twenties with spouses and significant others. They're also hopeful to have grandchildren on the not-too-distant horizon. The Smilys are lucky in that their children like to hang out with them, and so they are often at the Chatham house, especially in the summertime, to visit and are frequently visiting together. So they have multiple children, spouses, friends, et cetera, who come to visit at the house, which is great. The house is not overly large, especially for this neighborhood. And so the Smilys started looking into ways to add additional living area, because they found the existing house to be a little bit cramped when all the kids and significant others and friends were around staying at the property. So initially, they looked at the possibility of doing just a full demo rebuild, tear down the house, tear down the garage, put up a new structure. It's a large lot, it's over an acre, as all these lots on Morris Island are, and they have a lot of room to expand should they want to, from the footprint of the existing house. However, Mr. Smiley, as he explained to me earlier this week, he likes the look of the existing house. It's unique. It's got that bow design. He thinks it has a lot of character. You don't see a lot of those designs in this area, and so he didn't really want to change that too much. So he quickly pivoted to, is there a way to use the existing garage, detached garage, as a way to add some additional living area? So in working with his builder and his architect, it came up the idea, they would, again, partially demolish the existing garage, they'd take off the second level of the existing, they'd go down to the studs in the first level, and they'd build back up. New sheathing on the side, the proposed structure's obviously taller and bigger, but it's going to remain essentially in the same footprint as existing. There's about, I believe it's a 25-foot increase in footprint for a bump out that you see in the top right-hand corner there. But other than that, the footprint of the house is essentially the same. There is also the proposed addition of a deck off the back. This proposed garage would include living area on the second level that you see here. And when I talked to Mr. Smiley earlier this week, he explained to me their intent for this area. And so they see it really as a space to entertain, as a space to recreate with the family. They want to have, you know, big TV up there, they put a foosball table, it's a space to go, that they can go hang out when the children are around, especially in friends, and everyone's not so much on top of each other. It also would be a space when the children are visiting and somebody has to take a Zoom call for work, it's a little bit more privacy for them in this area that you'd get in the house itself. But the intent is really, while it's not attached to the house, the intent is to really incorporate it into the flow of the house. So it's not a separate, it's not going to be set off to the side for use as, again, it's a separate structure, but they really want to incorporate it into the house, the flow of the house, and again, just some more area for them and their family to have, to entertain, to relax. And they found that this design would really work for their needs and the needs of their family. The lot is conforming, it's over an acre, as I mentioned, but the existing garage is non-conforming as it's located just over 30 feet from the west lot line where a 40-foot setback is required. Morris Island is actually an R40A zone, which you don't see very often, and that requires 40-foot setbacks on all four sides, not just the street. The proposed garage structure, it's really, the structure itself is no closer to the west lot line, however, the deck, as the lot line pinches in a bit, becomes two feet closer to the west lot line than the existing house. So that's the reason for the additional encroachment is really the proposed deck off the back. As I mentioned, the proposed structure will be taller than what's there now, but it's still five feet less than the 30-foot height restriction, and the total building coverage on the property is less than one-half of the allowed 10% building coverage that's permitted on this site. Running into the, excuse me, running through the criteria, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use, we believe the size of the site is adequate for the proposal. While the garage is non-conforming and will remain non-conforming, really, it's a very modest increase, and that is a result of the porch off the back. The property, as a lot of these properties are out on Morris Island, they're heavily screened with vegetation, both from the road and from the neighboring properties. I would also note, you'll read a letter in the file from the Abutter at 98, which is the property of the west, and she's in support of the project before you today. Extent of the proposed increase and the non-conforming nature of the structure or use. The only proposed increase is the location of the garage, again, as the result of the proposed deck being two feet closer to the west lot line than the existing structure. Suitability of the site on neighboring properties or in the natural environment. Again, we believe the site is suitable for the proposed demolition rebuild. The property is not within the conservation jurisdiction, so there will be no negative impact on neighboring properties or on the environment caused by the proposed construction. Number five, impact of scale, signing en masse on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes, I'd suggest there will be no negative impact on neighborhood visual character. The height of the garage is higher, but as I said, it's still well below the 30-foot height restriction, and the property is well screened from both Wapoose Trail and from the Abutter on the west. I should have mentioned, it's interesting, it's an Addicks Trail address, you can't really see the garage from Addicks Trail, so you probably had to drive around the other side where it is visible from Wapoose. I included a gross floor area comparison, and as you'll see, these are very large lots in this neighborhood with very large homes. Our property, while it's not the smallest, it's one of the smallest in terms of the gross floor area for the house. So I think what's proposed is really a modest increase, and as you go through the gross floor area comparison and just driving through the neighborhood in general, you can tell that this house, even with the enlarged garage structure that you see on the screen in front of you, again, it's not out of keeping with the size of structures in this neighborhood, and again, it's really on the smaller side from what you see from a majority of homes on the Morris Island area. Number six, compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses, residential use, and therefore is compatible with this residential neighborhood, method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, where connected to town water. In 2019, a new four-bedroom septic system was installed at the property, and the new structure will be connected to the system during construction. There's also adequate drainage, and runoff will be contained on-site. No negative impact on traffic flow and safety, no issues with noise and litter. Property, as I mentioned, has adequate utilities, and 11 and 12 are not applicable in this instance. So that would be my presentation to you this afternoon, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the correspondences. There are two. First one, from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, on today, 4424. She says she's reviewed the plan to rebuild the garage at this property. The lot has over 40,000 square feet and is approved for a three-bedroom dwelling and garage apartment by a total of four bedrooms at the property. I have no concerns. And then there's one other letter from Diane Pulaski, 98, Addicks Trail in Chatham. On March 25th, 2024, she writes, please be advised that my husband and I, located at 98 Addicks Trail in Chatham, which abuts the property in question, would like to offer our approval of the request to enlarge or change the garage in question at 111 Addicks Trail in Chatham. And that concludes the correspondence. Is there anyone either here or in Microsoft Teams that has a question or wishes to speak against this application? If so, please indicate. Seeing none, questions from the board. Dave Veitch?
I have no questions.
Ed?
Just one quick question. Do you know how much the overhang is over the building?
I don't offhand.
The only reason I ask, I think if it's over two feet, you'll need to include that in the setback.
In the setback, okay. I'd have to confirm with Dave Clark, because you're generally pretty careful on those.
It looks like you're fine either way, because it says 30.6 feet to the existing building, and then it shows the overhang beyond that, so it would have to be, you know, two feet, six inches to be any closer, I guess, so...
Right, I guess if we're already non-conforming, we'd be perhaps a little bit more non-conforming than the porch, but it's a good question, I'm not sure of the answer, but I could have to check with Dave.
Not a big deal. Thanks.
Dave Nixon, questions?
Yeah, Jamie, I understand the reasoning for raising the ridge on the garage, and it looks like it's going to go up to 25 feet. And that's okay, but what kills it for me is the cupola, to be honest with you. It's way out of proportion for what this structure is, so I would ask that that be eliminated.
If I could just explain, I did ask about the cupola this week, and so the explanation I was given by Mr. Smiley, who I think is actually logged in, is that the architect and Mr. Smiley thought that actually softened some of the size of the structure, made it look more of a carriage house feel to the design, as opposed to if he took the cupola off, he thought it was a little bit harsher, so they actually felt that soften in the design. By the look on your face, I can see you don't agree with that.
No, I couldn't buy that argument, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, I'll see if we go through, I can see if Mr. Smiley can hop on and mention that.
And that'll be something we would vote on anyway, so...
Okay.
Yep. Paul, questions?
I actually had the same question that Dave Nixon had in this case. I usually don't object to cupolas, but as I look at the site plan, it looks to me as if the ridge elevation on the garage is 60.7, and on the cupola, it's 68.1. Yeah, so the cupola is almost eight feet of height above the bridge of the building?
That's correct.
Okay, I don't think I have any other questions on that.
Jenny, questions?
Yeah, I had the same question Ed did about the overhang, and maybe this is a question for Ed. So if it's less than two feet, it doesn't count, and if it's greater than two feet, it counts setback or coverage?
Both.
Actually, both? Both.
Okay, all right. So my question was really about the coverage, because if I did the calculation right, you are almost at 50%, right, the size of this house vis-à-vis the main house?
We're 700 and 1,500, so, yeah, roughly.
Yeah, so 49.4%. And if that building, I mean, that building, that's so close, that if that extra little building coverage, you know, if it's more than the two feet, that could impact that. That's why it's really, I think it's more important than the setbacks.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident that David has measured that correctly. It'd be helpful if he was here to answer that, just because he does note it on the plan, so I'd assume that went into his calculation, but I'd have to ask him to know if that's correct.
Yeah, and I just wanted to point it out, because you're so close to that 50%.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay, so that was one question. Another question is, I mean, this is a great floor plan, I didn't see a bedroom. There's a bedroom in the existing garage, not a bedroom proposed for this new structure?
I think it technically meets the definition of a bedroom. And they're going to use, it's going to be considered a bedroom from a health department perspective, so that would be the fourth bedroom on the property, so they would not be able to add another bedroom in the house.
Okay, so it's just not listed, it's listed family room. The reason I'm asking about that is because, as you know, to have a guest house, which this isn't, or to be a garage with habitable space, not a guest house, you can't have the three things, the sanitary, the sleeping, and the kitchen. And it definitely looks like it has a kitchen. Is that right?
Well, I would just distinguish that. Generally, it's cooking facilities, and it does not have cooking facilities is usually the distinguishing factor that creates a dwelling unit, as opposed to, in past practice in Chatham, you could have a refrigerator, a sink, a wet bar, but if you had cooking facilities like a stove, that would trigger the dwelling unit or guest house provision.
Yep. All right, so you're intending to have a bedroom, you're not intending to have cooking facility?
Correct. They don't want cooking, they don't want to cook themselves, they don't want anybody else cooking up there, they don't want to deal with cooking.
Okay, because there's an island, a dishwasher, a sink, counter space, refrigerator, I mean, there is no stove listed, but there's definitely room for a stove, and...
They just said, they put all that in there, they're thinking, people go up, they're going to have some wine, they want to be able to wash the glasses, leave the glasses up there, have some space, they have that bar area where they could sit, again, while they're, I guess, hanging out up there, but they assured me they have no desire to do any cooking up there, they would happily accept any sort of condition you had relative to putting in the special permit, finding that there is to be no cooking facilities in that space. That is not their intent at all.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? I don't have any questions.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds.
And how do you vote, Dave?
Vitro, yes.
And Ed, you don't vote on that? So I didn't announce before, voting today would be Dave Veitch, Dave Nixon, Jenny Fenwick, Paul Simple, and myself, so there's some things that Ed gets to talk about and some things he doesn't. So, go ahead, Dave.
Yes.
And Jenny?
Jenny votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
And as do I. So deliberations, Paul?
Well, I do have the same feeling that Dave Nixon has about the cupola. To me, it seems out of proportion to the building itself, and so I would not be in favor of that cupola as part of the overall presentation. Other than that, it seems to me it does satisfy our regulations.
Jenny?
Yeah, I agree. Jamie, you answered all my questions about the, I mean, it's a large lot, so it's very suitable for what they're proposing. Just the details about the guest house, wanting to make sure, and the coverage was, and you answered those. I agree, I think, I don't personally mind a cupola, but I think an eight-foot cupola, it really adds to the height. I know the structure's only proposed at 25, but that's really gonna, I think, be a little too high.
Ed, you get to deliberate.
I think it's, you know, a fair project, I think it'll fit well in the neighborhood, certainly not more detrimental. The cupola, I mean, does seem a little bit tall. And then the only other thing, I guess, is the coverage, we just want to make sure you're not exceeding that amount, so in the future, there isn't, you know, someone can't come back and say, and try and expand perhaps further.
Sure, I'll confirm that with Dave.
Dave Veitch?
Yeah, I agree with all previous. I am also on board, but I don't think that the cupola breaks up the mass of the additional massing of the garage, particularly, and I would agree, I think it's too tall for the structure, and it's not, doesn't enhance the structure, and so I can't support that part. And as far as all the other things, I think it meets all of our criteria, it's not substantially more detrimental than neighborhood, and I'll support it.
Okay, Dave Nixon?
I agree with all the comments, so thank you.
So I guess I would just ask what everybody thinks about the cupola being smaller. Is that a possibility?
Mark, are you able to hear us?
Throwing it out there.
I'm cutting in and out, but yes, somewhere.
Okay. The consensus seems to be, I don't know if you've heard the part of the earlier hearing, that the existing cupola for sure is too large, perhaps a smaller cupola may work, or no cupola at all in order for the board to approve it today?
Would they allow for some variation, some smaller cupola? Given the design or the landscape, that garage is much lower than the...
We can barely hear you, sir, so can you just speak up? I'm asking the question about your thoughts on a smaller cupola or no cupola, so then we can go back and see what the board thinks about your answer.
I'm open to a smaller cupola.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Mark.
So let me, if you don't mind, counsel, I'll go back and ask. Dave, what do you think of a smaller cupola?
Not acceptable.
Not acceptable. Dave Veitch?
Were the roof pitch of the cupola to be reduced, so that it was not eight feet tall, and that the, you know, a much lower pitch of 412 or something like that on there, could, I could go along with that. But certainly, the way that it's done now with the pitch that it has, especially with that it's eight feet above, is just way more than I think is appropriate for a cupola.
Do you think you'd have to come back with a new application so you could see before you were comfortable?
I could envision it, but I'm not going to speak for my fellow board members. I mean, I, there was at one point in time, I can tell from photographs, there was a cupola on the Candy Manor Building, my building downtown, and actually on the Squire Building across the street, same way. And those cupolas had a much lower pitch to the roof, and so I can envision a cupola like that, and have seen some historically. in town. So that could work, but not the way it's drawn.
No, not the way. And Ed, what do you think?
I, I do think it's too tall. And it would be nice to actually see it before we approved it. So, that's my thoughts.
Jenny?
Yeah, I, I think that, give, do you know how tall the height of the house is?
I do. It is, I believe, three feet higher than the proposed garage. Let's see. It's elevation 63.3 and the proposed garage elevation is 60.7.
Okay. So if you add, even if you cut the cupola in half and it was four feet tall, I know it's just the cupola, not the whole, but, you know, it's, it's a pretty substantial garage with habitable space. And I, I think it could maybe start to become, you know, not as subordinate to the house as it should be. So I would vote for no cupola.
Okay. Paul?
Well, I guess that leaves you with two, with no cupola. So I'm not sure what I think at this point makes much difference. But I think if you were going to try and go with a reduced-size cupola, I would need to see it in terms of plans.
Plans.
I would have to see it as well. So, the applicant, yeah. He can decide what you want to do.
So, Mark, it's Jamie. So to get approval today, it's going to have to be no cupola, or if you want to try a smaller cupola, we're going to have to come back at a later meeting with a redesign.
Okay, I would, I'm going to agree with no cupola then, for now.
No cupola. Okay.
It's not just for now. It's no cupola.
Right, right.
Okay. I think I heard of for now.
Understood.
There's always hope, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, that's true. Okay, so Paul?
Well, I'll move to approve the application as submitted, but I do need to know what your thoughts are in terms of construction.
Mark, when are you planning to start construction? In, in September?
Uh, eventually, I think, though, last week of August at this point.
He was saying last week of August?
Got some delays on...
Obviously, if, I guess you're doing...
After the summer. We don't want...
After the summer, so.
We don't want to interrupt, yeah, we don't want to interrupt the neighbors' summer of the driving.
So your, your Labor Day standard condition should be fine, Paul?
All right. I would, I would move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June 30th and Labor Day, there'd be no exterior construction allowed, no work could be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only. And the third condition would be that there are no cooking facilities in the renovated garage. And the fourth would be that there's no cupola on the garage.
Dave Veat seconds.
And how do you vote, Dave?
Veat votes yes.
I vote yes.
Jenny?
Jenny votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. It is unanimous.
Great. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. So on the next one, we're going to take it out of order. We're going to do 20 Pine Bluff Road, which is application number 24-026 next, because we have our building commissioner here, and he has to leave a little bit earlier today than usual. So we feel that he may be instrumental for any questioning on this one. So if that's okay with you, Mr. Litchfield, we're going to go out of order. Thank you. And so, next, Sarah.
Application number 24-026, JR Fennel Realty Trust, Shirley A. Fennel, trustee, care of Andrew L. Singer Esquire, P.O. Box 67, Dennisport, Mass. 02639. Owner of property is located at 20 Pine Bluff Road and 33 Pine Bluff Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's accessory map, 2A Block 67, Lot 41, and map 2A Block 66, Lot 36. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming, non-conforming accessory structures, guesthouses, on non-conforming lots via the demolition of the existing accessory structures and the construction of a new guesthouse. The proposed guesthouse will conform to road, abutter, and conservancy district setback requirements. The existing building coverage is 3,261 square feet, 10.4%. And the proposed building coverage is 3,200 square feet, 10.2% or 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains a single-family dwelling and two guesthouses where there is only the required buildable upland area for a single-family dwelling. The combined properties contain 31,463 square feet of buildable upland, where 40,000 square feet is required for a dwelling and a guesthouse, and 54,463 square feet of land area in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5, be able to protect it by law.
Mr. Singer, welcome. Who do you have with you?
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, attorney in Dennisport. With me at the podium is John De Silva from Paloma Savory De Silva. In the audience is also Steve Glashine from PSD. And Sean Riley from Ty &amp; Bond is on the, online.
Thank you.
This, an application for properties at 33 and 20 Pine Bluff Road. These lands were law, have long been combined as one lot for zoning and building purposes. I submitted a copy of the covenant that attests to that. We are at, in the R20 zoning district. There is the 1929 two-story single-family dwelling on the property. There also is a one-story guest cottage, guesthouse cottage, and a two-story detached garage guesthouse structure. The property, as some of this is repeated from the legal ad, but the property is conforming as to lot size and buildable upland and frontage, but it's pre-existing non-conforming as to the number of dwelling units, the land area for one, let alone two, guesthouses, and building coverage, and the northerly setback of the existing garage, the two-story structure, is too close to one of the property lines. As part of a redevelopment, what is being proposed is to remove the two detached accessory structures that are on the property and to replace them with one less non-conforming two-story guest, garage on the first floor, guesthouse on the second floor. And the replacement building will comply with all setbacks, so the one nonconformity that exists today will be eliminated. Also, there, one of the structures is within, just barely, but within the conservation jurisdiction that's being removed because this whole thing is coming back up. I don't know if, go to maybe the next one of the pages, you'll see on the site plan. There we go. Thank you. So on the left is the existing conditions, the right is proposed. The one change, that swimming pool in the existing conditions was removed last year. So it's, if you've been down there, it's just a grass. If you look at it now, it looks just grass. That's where the replacement structure would go. So it's being pulled back from, from the south, heading north. The applicant is requesting a special permit under the zoning bylaw and suggests that the application meets the criteria set forth in the bylaw as follows. Under adequacy of the proposed site, the site has been developed and long used for these same purposes. It's similar in size, if not larger than several properties in the immediate neighborhood, and will not be changing. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The replacement structure will be two stories. It will be, there will be a net decrease slight of building coverage on the property. And so submit that it will remain compatible with development on neighboring properties. In addition, you have two letters in your file from two of the closest neighbors on either side of east and west here of the proposed building, and they are in support of the proposal as to its compatibility. Suitability of the site, again, it's been developed and long used for the same purposes. Impact of the scale, sitting, and mass on neighborhood visual character. We respectfully submit that the proposal will be in keeping with the character the neighborhood entails in terms of scale, setting, and mass. And John will go over, after I go through this presentation, John will go through some of the floor plans or the elevations to, to further discuss that. The proposal structure has been designed to be consistent with the neighborhood's vernacular architecture. We went to the Chatham Historic Commission recently because the smaller, if you look on the existing conditions plan, the Southerly Building, where the cursor is right now, that building is dated as of the field card to 1930. It was, we believe, part of it was the original garage on the property from the 20s and 30s. It was converted to a cottage sometime back in the 30s or 40s. The historical commission voted unanimously on March 19th to not impose a demolition delay on the structure, finding that it was not historically significant. The replacement structure will comply with all setbacks, front, side, and rear. And as I mentioned, the pre-existing non-conforming northerly setback of one of the detached structures will be eliminated. Building coverage will decrease, still be slightly non-conforming, but go from 10.4 down to 10.2. Building height, 29.85, is going to remain conforming on the replacement structure. Compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses, there's going to be no change in the longstanding use of the property in this residential neighborhood. This replacement structure, while it's still non-conforming overall for having one guesthouse on the property because of the buildable upland, even though it's a larger lot, it will comply with the dimensional requirements for guesthouses. It will have no more than two bedrooms, and it will be less than 50% of the size of the main house. So it is otherwise a conforming guesthouse to the dimensional requirements. Number six, adequacy and method of sewage disposal and water and drainage. We are going, the structures, I noted, will be located outside of the conservation jurisdiction, and they have granted a, an RDA, just noting that fact as it pulls back. There is town water servicing the property. Stormwater runoff will be contained on site, and there will be no negative impact nor harm to groundwater, water supply, or drainage. Impact on traffic flow and safety, we submit there's going to be no increase of congestion in the public ways, no decrease in traffic safety, and that the parking will remain adequate. We would also propose the, the condition that you typically impose, that there will be no exterior construction between June 30th and Labor Day. The owner's goal, if it's possible, pending your approval, would be to possibly remove the two structures before June 30th. That may not happen, but that would be all that they would do, and they wouldn't rebuild until after Labor Day. The idea would be not to be doing construction over the season on the property. Noise and litter, there'll be no nuisance, odors, sounds, or other negative impacts. And there is adequacy of utilities and public services, serviced by all utilities, and that will remain. I'm going to turn it over to John to discuss some of the plans. And then, at the end, we would ultimately request that you make findings that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing, and ultimately grant a special permit. Thank you. John?
Let's see. Can we control the slides from here?
Sarah's in charge.
Could we go to the next slide, please? You can see the, the property here. This is number 33. This is a house that was renovated a few years ago. Next slide, please. This shows you the cottage and the two-story garage guesthouse that is behind it. Next, please. This is the second guesthouse from each side. These are the floor plans, the one-story guesthouse here, the two-story guesthouse garage on the first floor, apartment on the second floor. The site, the two structures are currently here. The pool, as we mentioned before, is, is gone. Those structures go away, and the new house is built further back on the property here. The driveway is more or less in the same place where the turnaround is as the existing, but the access to it is a little further up. This just shows it in a little bit more detail, the, those two places. This is the front elevation facing north, the side elevation, which faces Pine Bluff, the back elevation that faces number 33, the main house, and the west elevation, which faces the side of the property where the current houses are. Here is the first floor plan, half of which is garage. The other half is the first lower portion of the living space. The second floor, there is a family room with a small balcony and two guest bedrooms. These show it to you in three dimensions. This is the side that is the most public and brought down to the lowest scale in the design. Here you see it from the other angle. And that concludes the views of the house.
I think the next sheet might be, yeah, there's the site plan. And...
If there are any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them.
Okay, we'll get to that. Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation, counsel?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here, R on Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. See, none. I will read the correspondence. There are five. On March 19th, 2024, we had a correspondence from the Conservation Commission. The project was heard on March 13th, 2024. It, the project was issued a negative three determination. The project as proposed meets the performance standards of, under the Wetlands Protection Act, the town, and the Town of Chatham Local Wetland Bylaw and regulations for, thereunder for a negative determination of applicability. As to the second correspondence, we received it on 3/19/2024 from the Health Agent, Judith Giorgio. She says, "I reviewed the plan to demolish the existing cottages and rebuilding new dwelling. Floor plans of the existing dwellings, including the main house, are required to con, confirm the existing dwelling layout and bedroom number. The existing septic system is in the proposed paved driveway layout. It is unclear if they propose to use the same septic system. Further information is needed for this project." Next, we received a letter today from Christina Basset from the, let's see, let's see, Historical Commission. The CHC heard the cottage at 33 Pine Bluff and found it not to be historically significant and did not impose a demolition delay. Next, we have a letter from Harry Peaton III, and he does not, well, yeah, he'll give his address in the letter. "I am the owner of 381 Pleasant Street in Chatham, which abounds a portion of the applicant's property to the west. Based on the information I have learned, I have no objection to the planned demolition of the two existing accessory structures on the Fennel Trust property. In fact, I think that demolition would be beneficial to my property. I have not had the opportunity to review plans for the proposed construction of the new structure adjacent to Pine Bluff Road, which I understand may not occur for a year or more, but based on the prior improvements to the overall property owned by the applicant or an affiliate, I am confident it will be tasteful and a benefit to the surrounding community. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me if there's any questions. Please have this note put in the record regarding the subject application. Thank you, Henry E. Peaton III." Next, we have a note from Flora McQuillan on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. "Sarah, we are writing to you as abutters 25, 27, and 29 Pine Bluff Road to our neighbors, Trish and Mike Mordes. With regard to their application before the Town of Chatham, we have no objection." Counsel, would you like to respond to those, any of those?
Yes, we should have noted, we will provide the, the floor plans of the existing dwelling to, to health. And there is a, going to be a new septic system, which is going to propose roughly where the two buildings are today. So when the buildings come out, the new septic would go...
So when the buildings come out, the new septic would go there. It's a septic just for this building. The house has its own septic, separate systems, and they'll remain separate systems. And then on Mr. Peedin's email, the structure, this is the structure he was referring to. Yes, you know, that we're here for the approval of.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone here, or on Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question?
Oh, in favor?
We're doing, I didn't, yeah, I did in favor. Yep, so now we're on against, right?
Still no.
Still no one. Okay. No one wants to speak in favor or against, and no one has a question? Very good. Questions from the board? Dave Nixon?
Have none, thank you.
All right. Dave Veach?
I have no questions.
And Ed, acting?
Yeah, just a question. The Palermo House that's under construction off of Wadsworth, the pool is part of that property, correct?
That is correct. That pool that was built is part of the backyard of 10 Wadsworth.
And I assume that's a really good friend or a relative's house, because it seems to be like paths from this house going to that pool.
Family.
Family, okay. Answers that question. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. What is the height of the current house? Do you know?
The main house.
The main house.
I do not know the answer to that. Sean, do you have that?
I know that the proposed house is across the street, but, you know, it's an inch from the maximum, so I'm just trying to get a sense of the size of the height of the main house.
I do not see a ridge elevation on the existing conditions.
Okay, that's...
And this one is actually, it's an interesting, when you go down Pine Bluff, which it's a road, but it looks like a driveway, when you come in on it, the house 22 Wadsworth is up higher because the land goes down. So, and the houses across the 25, 27, 29 that you had the letter from, those are actually closer, I think, in some ways to this than the house that's actually on this lot. I don't know the ridge heights of those, but they're all about, they're about the same, and they're under, like physically below the Wadsworth properties, just because the road comes down, if that helps. We don't have, unfortunately, the actual height.
Okay. Mr. Singer, the covenant that you referred to, I'm really not that familiar with those. Is that something that can ever be undone?
No, not, I mean, it was a covenant that was granted to the town. So I mean, I guess if every, if all the parties wanted to come together and say, "Yeah, we can get rid of it," you could, but I don't see that happening. And it was done on purpose. The reason why, so you know why it was done, the land's been combined practically for decades. Part of it's registered land with the Land Court, part of it's recorded land with the Registry of Deeds. There's no easy way to make one lot out of that when you have part- registered land. And so what was this, I think that covenant was from back in 2007, if I remember. And so it was a covenant with the town saying, "For purposes of zoning, building, tax, everything, this is going to be one lot." But that's why it hasn't been actually, there's not a A&R plan showing it as one lot because of the registered land part.
I was only asking because, and I understand it's in the family, and it sounds like it's several family members, and I think that's terrific. Just looking ahead, you know, the guest house is amazing, what's being proposed. But I mean, it could be like a second house, and I just was wondering if that could ever be split up down the road and sold separately, that house, the guest house as a house?
No, it could not be. There's not enough land to do that. Interestingly, what was 20, where this house is going, or where the guest house garage is going, was a separate house, separate lot, I don't know, go back mid, early part of the 20th century. But then it got merged at some point. That house was removed, and so it can no longer be a separate buildable lot.
Okay, just wanted to check on that. Similar to the application we just heard, the overhangs, are they, can you confirm that they're less than two feet? Because you are a little bit less at 45%, but pretty close to the 50%.
Yes, I can speak to that. Steve Glesch from Palermo. Yes, the dimensions are one foot 10, so under the two foot.
All right.
Thank you.
And then Mr. De Silva, could you go back to the image that you had of the house where I think you said, there was one image where you said, "This is the main view that everyone would see."
Yes, the view that faces north towards Wadsworth.
Well, that's...
Well, that's it essentially.
That's it.
That is, we tried to approximate the view you would see of the house as you're coming down Pine Bluff off of Wadsworth. You are somewhat above the house because of the steep slope of the...
So this is why, this is why we like a 3D rendering, because the picture that we have in our packet, it's probably that, but it doesn't really look like that. Do you see what I mean? This looks much taller. That, that does look better because of the flat, I can't see the perspective of the flattened roof, so I noticed that as well. In fact, I wrote down that this is the view that you'd see from the street. You will also see the eastern view, right? Eastern view from the, as you're approaching?
You will see the eastern view...
On your approach to the property. And so which one is that? That's the one...
That's on the left-hand side in that first image.
On the top.
That runs parallel with Pine Bluff.
Would it be the top right image?
Top right.
It's the top right. That's the one that's running parallel to Pine Bluff.
That's the eastern view, right? That's what you're going to say?
Because it's coming down.
Yes, that, those are the same side of the house, but you're looking at them from two different angles. So the one on the top right is the east side of the house, as if you're looking from the south back up Pine Bluff Road.
Yep, okay, good.
It's also, there is a lot of screening, you know, for now, there's a large, for lack of a better term, hedges. I'm not sure they're actually hedges, but there's large screening planting that comes down there as well. It's a dead-end road, but that's there as well.
Well, and we purposefully moved the drive entrance further up on the property to allow screening, where there's now open driveway. Yes, in this... So in this portion of the property, it's now open to Pine Bluff. We're allowing a strip of landscape for screening there.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Paul, questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I've got several sets of site plans and the elevations which you provided. One set from Coastal in the table, zoning table, reflects that the guest house building height is 30.35 feet.
That was an error that was corrected.
Okay, that was an earlier plan.
It was.
And then that was corrected to 29.85?
That is correct.
Is that right?
That is correct.
And how does that compare to the elevation that's provided on your plans, which reflect 28 feet 9 inches to the ridge?
Hey, I'll speak to that quickly again. So on the architectials, it's the 28.9, I believe. It's from the actual grade, finished grade at the house, and the 29.85 is the grade plane calculation, so 20 feet off. So that's why there's a difference. So the 28 is the actual height from grade, and the 29 is the grade plane calculation done by Tyron.
So the 29.85 is the issue with respect to our regulations, right?
Absolutely, correct.
Okay. As opposed to 30 as being the max?
Correct.
So you're within .15 of the max?
That is correct.
What, what is it that requires you to be that high on a guest house?
Well, there's no, there's no requirement that it be that high. The design pitch, if you will, the pitch of the roof is an aesthetic decision to give the client the character of house they're looking for. And it is, as we noted before, it's a very shallow pitch as it comes down to the front, the main public portion of the house.
And what are the interior ceilings heights?
Well, they vary, depending on where you are in the house, the living room will have a cathedral ceiling, or a portion, a shaped ceiling, if you will. And that is on the second floor, so it goes up into the...
So on the second floor, the ceiling height is what?
Well, it varies from, I don't know if you, Steve, if you have an answer to specifics. It varies at the perimeter to, from a low...
Correct. The, on the floor plan, the rear, the bedrooms and main area is an eight-foot-six ceiling height, flat, with lower parts on the perimeter as the roof pitch comes down. And then in the living kitchen area, that's cathedrilled up to a high point of like 12 feet, but following the roof line.
From a low point.
From a low point of about 7.6.
So 7.6 around the perimeter.
Okay. And are the other locations on 27 and 24 Pine Bluffs, those other, the other houses to the right, the pool house and so forth, are those all family as well?
No, those were, the letter from the McQuillan family?
Yep.
That you, that was read, they own those three properties.
Okay.
That's not related people.
No longer related parties.
No longer related. It was many years ago, but not...
Okay. I have no other questions.
Dave Nixon, you had another question?
I did, and it really has nothing to do with the application, but perhaps Mr. De Silva can help me. When I looked at the main house, it had a very, very small, strange window in the roof, almost like a little dormer. Do we have any idea why that was put in there?
Well, natural light is, is important and beloved and a great, gives people a great feeling as they use a space, so it brings natural light into a portion of the house that otherwise had very little.
Even though it's so small, you know?
Even, even a small window still gets a shaft of sunlight coming from it that improves one's mood.
Okay, thank you.
So, council, given that it's a guest house, the rules are that it has to be 50% smaller than the, than the house, but there's no rule that we have about height, that it has to be, you know, a certain height with regard to the house, the main house. Is that right?
That is correct.
So they could even, I mean, the rules provide that they could be the same height, right?
They could be, or in theory, if the main house was one story, the guest house could be two, in theory.
Could be, yeah.
But it has, but it's the 50, no more than two bedrooms and no more than 50% of the floor area of the main house.
Right. First, I just want, I also want to ask if the building commissioner, Jay Briggs, has any comments on this? And then...
I'm checking the definition right now, if I can, have a second. The definition of guest house from the bylaw says, "Means a subordinate dwelling unit located on the same lot as the principal one-family dwelling owned and maintained by the owner of the principal dwelling." So I think you are looking for subordinate.
I'm looking for subordinate, yeah. So my comment is similar to Paul's, why does it have to be so high? Because, and it doesn't have to be so high, but it doesn't seem subordinate to me. So that's my, that's my sort of question comment.
Well, I'd suggest that since it's less than half of the floor area of the main house, it does fit that definition of subordinate. Also, given the distance that it is from the main house, the way this lot is shaped, I think it, it does, and again, obviously, that's something that you have to agree with or not, but we believe it does meet the spirit and reality of being a subordinate structure. And when you look at what's there today, when you look at the two structures that are there today, they actually have, particularly the two-story structure, the way they're facing the road, the way they're right next to each other, the way they're a little bit bigger in footprint, they actually have a, almost a larger appearance than what's being proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the, the, the main house, number 33, also has a fairly formal entrance. It has a small pediment and an entry porch and columns, so it is, it addresses itself as a primary dwelling, where the guest house has a little cutout in the corner that is its entrance. So it is designed to appear secondary to the main house.
And I can understand too why you'd want to have some height there, I mean, it's a beautiful spot, so that makes sense. So...
Randy?
Oh, yes, please, Dave Veach.
Did I, I, I'm not sure if I had, I don't think, but I, so I just want to clarify, I think I clarified because of the questions about the height. What I'm reading into this, correct me if I'm wrong, is that showing the building height is 28 foot 9 inches plus or minus from, and then the grade plane is the 29, 28, or 28 foot 9, and the grade plane is 29.15 feet. And so, of course, we know that's getting closer and closer, but I, I'm, I think I'm reading into this that were there any issues, you'd be able to correct it via the grade plane? Is that...
That is correct.
Safe thing to say?
I'm getting a nod.
That's a question for Sean.
Okay, so that...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the meaning that if for some reason it got closer or over that 30 feet height, you would be able to address that via the grade plane rather than in the structure of the building?
In this case, we would. There's ample room on the west side of the house to adjust the grade, should there be an issue.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. So does anyone else have any questions at this point? And if not, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach second.
And how do you vote, Dave?
Veach votes yes.
And Dave? Yes.
And Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Judy?
And Ginny votes yes.
As do I. So deliberations. Dave Nixon?
Well, overall, this is being made better than what's there right now. You know, I think Mr. De Silva's design on the new guest house far surpasses, the two buildings are being taken down, and you're going from two to one, which is in the right direction. So I can see no reason not to feel that this is a great project, and I will 100% support it.
Okay. Ginny?
Yeah, I was struggling a little with the height, but, so I, first of all, Mr. Singer, I want to say that your summary and your presentation, so helpful in the pre-preparation, what you had included in your packet, I kind of was struggling. So, I mean, I think it's beautiful. The property is one of, if not the best I've seen in Chatham. I've only been on this board for a year, and it's, it's just stunning. I agree with Mr. Nixon. It overall is a net improvement. But then I started kind of reading through the criteria and, you know, getting a little bit maybe into the weeds, but I sort of created this little ledger. You know, you've mentioned how there's an improvement to conservation, there's improvement, it's only 61 square foot reduction in building coverage. The, you know, it meets, it meets the requirements of the 50%. Visually, it's an improvement moving those two structures. Historics said it wasn't. So there are a lot of things in that, in the pro ledger column. And I think that on a net basis, there wasn't enough on the negative. I think it's a little high. Maybe you don't need the 12 feet, but that neighborhood can support that. There's a house, what's the one on Wadsworth, that's very similar in design. So anyway, I agree. I think that it's a great project, and even though it is getting larger than the two separate units combined, there are some positives with the location across the street. The design is terrific, and I would, I would, I would support it.
Dave Veach?
Yeah, I agree with the previous. I think that's, it's, you know, from a zoning perspective, it's an improvement over what's there. I don't think anyone's really going to miss the, I guess you'd call it rhomboid-shaped garage that's coming down. Interesting, but I don't think that that's going to be missed. And so it's not substantially more detrimental. I think it's an... And so, uh, it, it's not substantially more detrimental. I think it's an improvement, as I say, from a zoning perspective and meets our criteria. I will support it.
Okay, Ed, how would you vote if you were voting?
I, I, I guess I agree with the, the rest of the board so far. I think, um, I'm jealous. It's a beautiful little family compound you have there, you know? It, it's certainly going to be nice to have everyone there together at that sort of shared pool. And I, I appreciated Mr. De Silva's, um, description of the entryway into the guest house and how that sort of is a subordinate type of structure. It doesn't have the, the, um, the portico over it and, uh, appreciate the, you know, the thought that was put into it. So I would be voting yes if I was voting.
Okay, and Paul?
Yes, I, I agree. I think overall, the, uh, the elimination of the two accessory buildings that are there, uh, is a positive development. And, uh, I'm sure that this will look, uh, will look good once it's done. You really can't see it from the road as a practical matter unless you're coming down Pine Bluff. And in the meantime, you've got ten rods worth up there that's being done and, and, uh, has been a project for quite a long time, uh, and it seems as if that will be a net benefit as well. So I don't think this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And conditions, um, counsel, do you want to opine on that? Or did you already say that you were going to do?
The one about no construction between.
Yeah.
June thirtieth and, um, Labor Day and obviously parking off the street.
Yeah, so the usual condition?
Yes, usual.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work will be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between eight AM and five PM only. Dave Veitch seconds.
And how do you vote, Dave Veitch?
And Veitch votes yes.
Dave Nixon?
Yes.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your positive comments.
When Sarah's ready, we'll go to the next application. Oh, uh. Five minute break? No. See what we have next. Yep, we have application twenty-four dash zero one four.
Application number twenty-four dash zero one four, Guesner Magioni Family Living Trust, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, three thirty Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. zero two six five zero. Owner of property located at sixty-two Chase Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, sixteen C, block fifty-four, lot C seven. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the extension of an existing deck. The existing dwelling is non-conforming and it is located within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation eleven. Proposed deck extension will be non-conforming, and then it will be located within the Coastal Conservancy District where a fifty-foot setback is required. The law is non-conforming and it contains five thousand one hundred square feet of buildable upland where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section five B of the protective bylaw.
Attorney Litchfield, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Bill Litchfield, uh, here on behalf of Jay Guesner and Kara Magioni. They regret that they couldn't be here today. This is, uh, time of year when they're taking their senior in high school daughter around to look at colleges. So I don't really know how they're going to be able to afford and expand a deck if you approve the special permit, but we hope that you will. They regret that they couldn't be here. I know you went out to the site, which is down at the end of Chase Street, a small, uh, lane really off of, uh, School Street in the Village. But it's a lovely location right on, uh, the Mill Pond, and what they'd like to do is to not quite square off, but nearly square off the existing deck as shown there. Uh, a small area on the southern side, uh, we would have liked to square it off, but that would have gotten us too close to the street, such as the street is. Uh, so we shaved off a further corner, so it will have a matching corner on the northwest side as well. Excuse me, because it's a fairly simple, uh, proposal, go straight into the criteria. As the adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks, like most of the houses in the neighborhood, we have an undersized lot and we are partially in the flood zone, as are many other houses in that neighborhood. We have excess coverage based only on buildable upland. The lot itself is more than a half acre, but relatively small amount of its buildable upland. But it's certainly adequate for the existing structure, and I think that you will find, you can find that it will be adequate for the proposed expanded jet deck. There's no change in coverage or in setbacks. As the compatibility of size, we have a relatively modest one and a half story house, which will not change. There's no size really involved here. The house will be unchanged, the living area and gross floor area remain the same. The two hundred and twenty-six square foot addition to the deck is consistent with others in the area. I didn't bother to give you the sizes of the other houses in the neighborhood. I have them here. But some of those, uh, adjacent properties have decks of six hundred sixty-five square feet, six hundred twenty-three square feet, and eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet. So our deck will also be compatible and there's no change in coverage. As to the extent of increase in non-conformity, our sole non-conformity relates to the possibility of buildable upland and the fact that we're in a floodplain and there's no change. The proposed addition, like the existing deck, is in or actually above the floodplain, but there's no increase in non-conformity. As to suitability of site, the site has been developed for residential use for almost half a century. We have had a thorough and continuing review by the Conservation Commission. There is significant, I think, seven hundred odd square feet of mitigation planting proposed. Excuse me, the comment from the Conservation Commission, which the chair will read, states that a land management, uh, plan is to be filed. It has been filed, uh, for final approval and that the, we can be conditioned by the commission. As to scale, sighting, mass, views and vistas, the existing house at a cul-de-sac, end of a cul-de-sac and behind a hedge has been part of the streetscape such as it is since shortly after the street was created, but there's no change proposed. The deck is not visible and it is without mass. Even if Mr. Acton's, prior Mr. Acton, if Peter Acton's spirit had been looking at, uh, the Mill Pond, from the Mill Pond, it still wouldn't be visible, uh, because the expanded deck is not visible. It has no impact on scale, mass, views or vistas. As to compatibility of use, there's no change, no, no impact on water, on town water, sewage impact and traffic flow and so forth. As to the extent of lateral expansion and resulting impact on pervious area, approximately half of the house, uh, and all of the deck, the existing three hundred and seventy square feet, is within the Coastal Conservancy District or floodplain, and both are completely within the setback to the resource area. Uh, so the degree of lateral expansion is two hundred and twenty-six square feet, but there's no increase in coverage, no increase in habitable space. And relocating the generator, the significant mitigation, uh, will be benefiting, uh, the site. Most importantly, however, there is no new impervious area, so I think we meet that criteria as well. Thus, the question, as you know, is whether the, uh, whether the construction of two relatively small additions to the existing deck with a very modest, uh, and unimpactful lateral expansion, uh, is substantially more detrimental than the neighborhood. And you can find that it is not. The small additions to the deck will allow for greater use, but without any negative consequences. It's not visible, there's no mass involved, it's compatible and so forth. With the mitigation, it will have a positive environmental impact. So I think you can find it to be a reasonable request, consistent with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, and thus can find, in light of the criteria and the plans, that the grant of a special permit will not be at all detrimental to the neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this deck extension? Please indicate. Seeing none, um, I will read the correspondences. There are two. First one is from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. I have no concerns regarding the proposed deck extension at this property. Next one is from Conservation, and that was received on March seventh, twenty twenty-four. The project as proposed to, on the submitted site plan, can be conditioned to meet the performance standard, standards under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Chatham Local Wetland Bylaw, um, regulations promulgated thereunder. Questions? Nope. Is anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application? Please make it known. Seeing none now, questions from the board. Dave Nixon?
I have none.
Ed?
Uh, no questions.
I have no questions.
Paul?
No questions.
And Ginny?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations. Dave Veitch seconds.
And how do you vote?
Van votes yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Judy?
Yes.
As do I. Deliberations, uh, Ed?
Just, you know, very modest, uh, alteration to the decks. And certainly moving the generator, I think, is a great idea from having it right underneath the deck, so. Certainly not detrimental to the neighborhood and would support the project totally if I was voting. Thank you.
Dave Veitch?
Yeah, um, speaking of generators, mine was running this morning. Um, so, uh, no, this is certainly not substantially more detrimental, a nicer, um, improvement to the property and, and with the generator as well. So, um, I will support it.
Dave Nixon?
It meets all the criteria, certainly not Dr. Mattleton the neighborhood.
And Ginny?
Nice summary, Mr. Litchfield. Um, I agree with my colleagues, um, n- nice project and, uh, not, uh, detrimental to the neighborhood.
And Paul?
Yes, I agree. Uh, I think it's certainly not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And conditions?
Uh, we'd like to start as soon as possible, and I think in this location, given this location, it's not going to have any problem. We might start June twenty-ninth and be finished June thirtieth anyway. It's going to be a short project, but I think we'd prefer not to have a seasonal limitation.
Okay, um, does anybody have any objection to the no seasonal limitation? Looks like we don't. Paul?
What about the question of, uh, parking? Is there any issue, uh, with people using Chase?
To be perfectly honest, it was simple. I did not check to see whether Chase is a public or a private way. Having said that, I, I am aware that people park in the cul-de-sac from time to time. And I'm sure the, that Kara and Jay will talk with their neighbors to make sure there aren't any problems. So they may, this is not, you know, you don't need a lot of big trucks to build a deck, so I don't think it'd be a problem anyway.
Does it make sense to, to have, uh, construction activity and vehicles contained on site or neighboring property with the permission of the property owner?
If I knew who owned Chase Street, I could give you a better answer. That's the problem. I, frankly, I don't know. If it, i- if it's a private way, we own to the middle of it, subject to the rights of others to use it. If it's a public way, we probably have to ask the chair.
We're gonna, we're actually going to get the answer to that, of course, by a magician.
That's anyone?
I'm not seeing.
Site plan says.
Offhand, but I think it's a private road.
Site plan says private thirty-five.
Yeah, that, that, that's my understanding. So in that case, uh, I'm not sure that it's required anyway. We arguably own half of it because we're on the side where the work is going to be constructed.
Okay.
Work to be done, rather.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Dave Veitch seconds.
And how do you vote, Dave?
And Veitch votes yes.
I vote yes.
And Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
And Paul votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. And when, next application is going to be twenty-four dash zero two nine, ninety-four Juniper Lane West.
Application number twenty-four dash zero two nine, Lawrence Bryan Cost Revocable Trust and the Janus M. Cost Revocable Trust, care of SV Design LLC, six ninety-three Main Street, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owner of property located at ninety-four Juniper Lane West, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, four D, block fifty-one F, lot ND seven. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a conforming dwelling and conforming garage on a non-conforming lot via the construction of dormers to allow for new habitable space on the second floor of the garage, which is, which is considered a substantial alteration and under the second except clause of section six of Mass, Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The building coverage will remain one thousand nine hundred fifty-eight square feet, ten point two percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming and it contains nineteen thousand one hundred forty-six square feet of buildable upland where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section five B of the protective bylaw.
Hello, welcome. SV Construct, Design, I take it?
Yes.
And your name?
Sean Henry with SV Design, uh, representing the own, uh, for the owners of ninety-four Juniper Lane. As mentioned, there's two conforming structures on the lot, an existing four-bedroom house and a detached two-car garage with unfinished space above. The goal of this project is to remove a bedroom from the basement, uh, by creating a new cased opening and removing a pocket door, thus opening it up into the living space and transferring that bedroom to above the garage. I would be finishing this space and conditioning it, uh, removing the interior stairs, creating exterior access via stairs and a deck, uh, adding a dormer off the back and, uh, the front of the building. Uh, the project was, uh, before Conservation and, uh, was approved. I can go through the criteria. I did, uh, include a, a sheet answering that, but.
But just for the record, if you could go through the applicable criteria, thank you.
Number one, adequacy of the size of the site, including but not limited to the maximum lot or building coverage and setbacks. Uh, we believe it is, uh, adequate. Uh, the proposed changes do not increase the building coverage, building height or any art setbacks. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The addition of the dormers to the existing garage maintains compatibility with the neighboring properties. Minimal volume is, uh, added. Number three, not applicable, suitability of sight, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, bodies and stormwater runoff. We are adjusting some of the site, uh, to landscape steps. And again, was proposed by the Conservation, uh, Agency and, uh, no additional roof runoff will be created. Number five, impact of scale, sighting and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. Uh, the front elevation of the garage is visible from the cul-de-sac. And we think adding the dormer is in keeping with the character of the house and neighborhood. The dormer will certainly be more appealing than looking at a blank slate of shingles. Uh, and if you were at the site, there's, uh, very large and thick vegetation along the two property lines that, uh, are closest to the garage and, and screen, uh, any neighbor's views of, uh, the garage. So, uh, no change from their views or vistas. Uh, compatibility with the pros, proposed use for the neighborhood uses, uh, it's residential use in a residential neighborhood. Adequacy, uh, method of sewage disposal. The proposed bathroom on the second floor is going to be connected to the existing septic system. Uh, I know Judith noted that, uh, a plan showing that, uh, is needed. It is noted on the, the site plan, but any further information we will provide. It is noted on the, the site plan, but any further information we will provide. And I don't think the rest are applicable.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please make it known. If so, seeing no one here and no one online, we'll read the correspondence. There are two. First one, as you said, is from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, on 319, 2024. I have reviewed the plan to convert the garage at this property to habitable space with a bedroom. The property was approved and septic installed for the existing four-bedroom property. The proposal is to remove one bedroom from the main house by removing the doorway and replacing it with a six-foot cased opening. The plan showing the connection from the garage to the new septic system will be required. Then we have a note from Conservation. And that was on March 7th, 2024. The project was issued a negative three determination, stating that the work described in the request is within the buffer zone as defined in the regulations, but will not alter an area subject to protection under the act. Therefore, said work does not require the filing of a notice of intent. Native plants shall be approved by the agent prior to planting. That's that. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against the application? Seeing no one here or has a question? No one online? And questions from the board? Dave each?
I have no questions.
Ed?
I guess I have one question. It says that the building coverage is going to stay the same, yet there's been a, a deck and a set of stairs and then it looks like a, a landing area on those set of stairs. So I would think that would change your building coverage.
I think it's just roof areas, no additional roofed areas are being proposed. So the, the site coverage is what's limited to the site, so that site coverage is not being increased.
But the landing for those stairs?
It's, it's pervious, so it's, it's not considered a roofed area.
Okay, thank you.
Dave Nixon, questions?
None, thank you.
Ginny, questions?
No questions.
And Paul, any questions?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions either.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave each seconds.
Each?
And each votes yes.
And Dave Nixon?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
As do I. Deliberations. Dave each?
Well, this is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's, it's, it will fit right in. It meets all of our criteria and so I will support it.
And Ed, how would you vote if you were voting?
I agree with Dave. Certainly not substantially detrimental and that Nantucket Dormer, I think, is quite a nice addition to it, so I would be voting yes.
Dave Nixon?
Yes, when I went out there, I was very pleased to see what had already happened to the property and how this was going to fit in there. Sometimes I don't feel that way, but I certainly did with this, so.
Yep, very good. Ginny?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, looks like a nice project. And visually adding the dormers to, to that tall, you know, right, right there, that, that roof line, I think is, is, is an improvement. And as Mr. De Silva said in the previous application, a little light brings, what did he say, good health or, or, anyway, that, that's a good thing. And also the change of use. To, you know, remove the one bedroom from a basement and move it over there creates a little separation. And there is a basement now, I mean, a bedroom now on the upper floor, the main floor and the lower floor. So anyway, I, I would, I would support the project.
And Paul?
Yes, I agree with my colleagues, there's certainly been a lot of change to Juniper Lane West in the last five years, I guess, in terms of construction. But that's with the view over Taylor, Taylor Pond, so. I agree, it's certainly not substantially more detrimental.
And what about conditions? What do you think, sir?
The standard conditions are fine.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work will be permitted on the weekends. And construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave each seconds.
And how do you vote, Dave each?
And votes yes.
And Dave Nixon?
I vote yes.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Well?
All votes yes.
As do I, very good.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck, it's unanimous. We have one more application.
Application number 24-031, Hope Trust, Joyce G. Jenkins, trustee, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 19 Stoughton Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 6C Block 55, Lot J15. The applicant seeks to extend special permit number 22-014 for two years. The current expiration date is April 28th, 2024, and the proposed expiration date is April 28th, 2026. Special permit number 22-014 allowed the applicant to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new dwelling. And construct a new dwelling and deck in the same footprint. The existing dwelling and deck will be non-conforming and that it is located 16.3 feet from the road, 6.8 feet from the east of Lea Butter and entirely within the coastal conservancy district. The building coverage will remain 724 square feet, 58.5%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming in that it contains 1,238 square feet of buildable upend and 5,662 square feet of land area where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, chapter 48, section six and nine and sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Welcome.
Thank you. Bill Litchfield, on behalf of Joyce Jenkins, who is the trustee of Hope Trust that owns this property, we are seeking an extension. Absolutely no change. Four of the six of you were on this board four years ago when you granted Ms. Jenkins permission to demolish the existing cottage and rebuild it on the same footprint. She had some very serious health problems which delayed the process. Her health is better. But we are seeking basically to start over and asking for a two-year extension, no change. The building remains cupola-free.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield.
So, that's your, is that your presentation?
I'd be happy to go into the criteria, all of which I have there.
No, there's only, the only criteria you have for today is about the extension, which.
Correct.
You know what the applicant, what that is, and it's whether or not you're asking for something that's reasonable. And you are. Well, we'll, we'll get to that. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this extension?
Yes.
In favor, very good. Sir, please identify yourself.
Great, thanks a lot. Tom Reedy, we own, our family owns 20 Stoughton Lane, just across the street. Here to speak in support, we think it's going to be a great redevelopment. We'd, we'd ask for the usual conditions, just the seasonal restriction and then just to make sure that, that the parking occurs as the board conditions. Stone Lane, as you know, is not a very wide way, so if they could stay off that traveled way to allow unimpeded access, that'd be great. But I talked to Attorney Litchfield yesterday and, and we're really looking forward to the redevelopment of the property.
Okay, so. Anybody else here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor? Please make it known. I would just say at this point, as you know, Mr. Litchfield, there were no conditions. So we're gonna, just the construction vehicles. So should we get to that when we get to it?
You can, if, if I mind, Madam Chairman, Mr. Reedy and I spoke yesterday and I spoke with Ms. Jenkins and her family and I assume Mr. Semple would ask about conditions and we would ask for the addition of a standard summertime construction condition as well. Perfectly acceptable.
Okay, good to know. All right, so at this point, I'm going to read the correspondence. First one is from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the Town of Chatham, on March 19th, 2024. I have no objection to the extension of the special permit for this property. Next, we have a Conservation Commission note, and that was on March 7th, 2024. The Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions on April 6th, 2022. The project has been conditioned to meet the standards and, under all the rules and laws, and that hasn't changed. And then we also have a letter from, let's see, someone named Chris. Let me see if we get to the name. Oh yeah, Chris Unglob. And this was on April 3rd, 2024. I wanted to reach out before the ZBA meeting is taking place on April 4th, 2024 regarding the 19 Stoughton Lane, Chatham, on 19 Stoughton Lane in Chatham. Although I wholeheartedly support the project on 19 Stoughton Lane, but as the immediate neighbor who enjoys the house in the summer months, I ask that no construction begin until the end of Labor Day, for our sake and the sake of the neighborhood. I appreciate your assistance with this matter. Thank you for your time. And then we have one more letter from John Conley on 19, on April 3rd, 2024. And this says, I hope you, this finds you well. My name is John Conley and I reside at 45 Stoughton Lane in Chatham. I'm writing to express my support for the demolition construction project at 19 Stoughton, but request that the construction does not commence until after Labor Day. Construction during the summer months would, would pose accessibility challenges and noise issues that would negatively impact the neighborhood residents and summer renters. I appreciate you taking this request under consideration. That concludes the correspondence. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? If so, make it known. Seeing none. Questions from the board? Ginny?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Dave each?
I have no questions.
Ed?
No questions.
Dave Nixon?
I do. You know, typically the second bite of the apple, I've always been in favor of one year, not two. Is there any reason that one year would not be sufficient for your client to either get this thing going or move on to something else?
We talked about that and because of the seriousness of her health conditions, none of the work which might ordinarily have been done in terms of construction plans, bidding, et cetera, et cetera, has been done. It, it simply stopped. And accordingly, as, as I believe you know, the standard statewide, like as with Conservation, is for three years. And we didn't have a lot of, because of the Permit Extension Act in 2008, you didn't deal with a lot of extensions. But we think in this case, the two years would be reasonable and appropriate under these circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I'm not 100% comfortable with changing the conditions because I feel like it might be sort of against the rules. But I suppose we could do it because there is also a rule that we can do things that are against the rules if we want. Towards the end, there is a rule that says that.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I, I just want to hear from everybody else first, but this was a quick hearing last time and there was hardly anyone that said anything and it went through like a cold drink on a hot Saturday afternoon. And this time, you know, we're really not prepared to talk about conditions in terms of this street and whatnot. The, the hearing was over. So I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with changing conditions and then we'll go from there. So that was my question slash comment, and now we will have a motion from Paul.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave each seconds.
And how do you vote?
And votes yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
As do I. So deliberations and talking also about the conditions. Ginny, what do you think?
I don't have any comments about the, the project, but, or I, I, I think the two years is, is, I guess that'd be a comment. I think that's fine. I, I like adding the conditions because, A, we usually offer the conditions and the neighbor in particular has spoken today, participate in the meeting to, to voice that. We did look at the property, it is tight, so I, I would support the addition of the additional condition.
Okay, Paul, what do you think?
I agree, I think the additional conditions make sense.
And Dave each?
Yeah, I don't, I, I, my memory doesn't serve me well enough to think about why we didn't put them on initially. And I didn't watch.
It was really no reason, no one asked about it, I listened to the hearing today and it just didn't even come up.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I mean, this is certainly the kind of neighborhood where we tend to look pretty closely at these things. So I'm not sure how it got biased, but certainly hearing from three of the neighbors this time around, I, I can definitely support adding the condition to, to it. I think it's appropriate.
And Ed, what do you think?
I, I, after being out to the site and it doesn't, it, it is a very narrow street, so I, I believe the conditions are beneficial to, to all the property owners out there.
Sure, Dave Nixon?
Yeah, I think it escaped the first time because the then chairman was asleep at the switch. I think that's how it got through. But definitely, I think we should have them protect the neighborhood and the neighbors and it makes sense. And by what Mr. Litchfield says, it's not going to affect his client.
Yep, well, as long as the client is, is amenable to that, because I came in here thinking that I wouldn't force that. But I, I want to go along with my, my colleagues, so I would also vote to say two years and add conditions. So Paul?
I will move to grant the requested extension to April 28th, 2026 on the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. And that between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work will be permitted on the weekends and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave each seconds.
And how do you vote?
And votes yes.
And Dave?
I vote yes.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
As do I, that's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn, I think.
I will move to adjourn.
Dave each seconds.
And how do you vote?
And votes yes.
Ed?
Yeah. Ed votes yes.
Yes.
And Ginny?
Yes.
And Paul?
All votes yes.
As do I, and what time is it?
It's 4:42 PM.
All right, good night, Chatham, very good.
Very good.